Has the recording? Thank you. So it is now one o'clock and I'd like to convene the San Mateo County Harbor Board of Commissioners regular meeting today at one o'clock, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Roll call, please, Melanie.
Commissioner Chang Crowley.
Present.
Commissioner Ryrie.
Present.
Commissioner Matush. Commissioner Zemke.
Present.
Commissioner Laranis.
Here.
Great, thank you. We have a quorum. Let's go to item B, which is public comments. Any member of the public can make comments on items that are not on the agenda, and I will open up public comments now. I don't see any hands raised, but Melanie, in case I'm missing something, do you see any hands raised or have you?
I do not.
Okay. So then I will close public comments and let's go to item C, which is the consent calendar. And you would want anyone like to pull off any items on the consent? Then is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move that we could approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, any last comments? Can I just make a quick comment? I just wanted, there's the report by John Moran, which is the monthly capital projects, and I just want to thank you, John, for that update, especially on the eelgrass mitigation issue. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So any other comments? If there are no other comments, then Melanie, if you could do roll call, please.
Commissioner Ryrie.
Aye.
Commissioner Zemke.
Aye.
Commissioner Laranis.
Aye.
Commissioner Chang Crowley.
Aye. So that motion carries, and now we're on to the discussion section of our meeting. And that the first item is number ten, which is Pillow Point Harbor West Trail Living Shoreline Project Update and GHD Construction Management and Environmental Monitoring Proposal Consideration. Mr. Moran, I think this is your item, if you want to kick off the discussion.
Yes, this this agenda item is for the board to receive a project update and presentation and consider approval of a proposal from GHD regarding the West Trail Project. West Trail Shoreline Protection, the shoreline project. And the motion is to approve entering into a professional services agreement with District's West Trail Living Shoreline Project Design Engineering Consultant GHD for a not-to-exceed amount of nine hundred thousand, seven hundred and one, four hundred and sixty-three, thirty-one. For project construction management and environmental monitoring for a period of five years. Since 2012, the district has been working to protect the West Trail shoreline near the bluff runoff outfall cover. Design Engineering Consultant GHD was contracted to develop alternatives to prevent further trail erosion with an emphasis on a living shoreline approach with minimal hard arming, armoring. Permitting challenges have successfully been addressed, and the project invitation for bid for actual construction had been solicited. Low bid for construction was approved by the Board of Harbor Commissioners in August. The approved contractor is currently developing a work plan for district approval. Once a work plan is approved, RFIs are answered and building materials can be sourced, and notice to proceed for actual construction will be issued to the contractor. Now that we are entering the construction phase, District Design and Engineering Consultant GHD has submitted the attached proposal for construction management, engineering, environmental compliance, vegetation, signage, and required monitoring and reporting for a period of five years. The GHD team will now provide a brief project update and detail on their proposal, then answer any questions the board may have. And we've we've got Brian Leslie. Melanie, can you allow Brian to share a screen?
And Brad Damas as well.
Yes, so this is the presentation, right, John?
Yes, yes.
So he, Brian's going to do this now?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't sure if you wanted questions before the presentation, or if you, I mean, we can do the presentation.
Brian, Brian and his team, he's got Brad with him as well, are going to give us a brief update on the project, then kind of go over their proposal components, and then there'll be ample time for answer any questions the board may have.
Great, thank you, and welcome, Brian and Brad.
Thank you. And we have one other person joining as well as Bob Battaglio. If you could unmute him as well, he's gonna go through a few slides later on.
Yeah, we've got Paul Henderson here as well.
Henderson, of course, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so there are four, three of y'all from GHD and Brad, so welcome to our meeting today.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't see that I can share a screen quite yet.
Mr. Leslie, I've promoted you to panelist.
Perfect, thank you, I can share a screen now, and yeah, if we could just check that Paul Henderson, Bob Battaglio, and it looks like, sounds like Brad speaking, but if we can make sure those those other two are unmuted so they can speak to their respective slides, that'd be great.
Of course.
Thank you.
Just confirming you've got Paul here.
Yep, I got you, Paul. All right. I need to swap screen, correct? So that'll look right? Paul?
You want to put it on one?
Yeah, swap the other way, okay.
Yeah. Yep.
Looks good.
Great, thanks, everybody. All right, good afternoon. My name is Brian Leslie, and it looks like the camera is a little bit low. Let's get dialed in here. My name is Brian Leslie with GHD, as we mentioned, joined with a few of the team members here today. There's a couple others that couldn't make it, Bingo Native and Peter Bay. But we want to just give a brief presentation of that explains our proposal for construction and post-construction phase services. So everyone knows the project well, so I won't spend too much time here, but the project does two things. It has a living shoreline component that aims to solve the eroding, chronic eroding nature of the West Trail through this kind of multi-benefit technique. And it also proposes to improve the stormwater system, both the aesthetics, function and maintenance, and also kind of bring an ecological lift by moving the hillside drainage through a new bio-retention or biofiltration basin, and then to the Pillow Point Marsh. What happened there? Okay, so our role, let me flip this over. So our role during construction would be to ensure that the project is being built per specification and that all permits are being adhered to. We also included the planting of native habitats under this contract because it's kind of a unique type of work that we didn't want necessarily have the contractor do, and also lead times associated with growing these these native plants. We've, under our existing contract, we've started that process, growing these native plants, so they, we have the plant palette available to us when we're when we're ready. So we also propose five years of post-construction phase services. This work is somewhat unique to living shoreline type projects because you can't just build them and kind of walk away. So the physical and biological performance is something that the regulatory agencies are really kind of interested in, and that's why you kind of see that as part of this project. Also included in the post-construction phase services is a periodic maintenance of the dune, and we have subcontractor Go Native to help us with that, to come back to the dune a couple of times a year to make sure that the habitat is looking good, remove it of non-native species, pick up trash and other kind of miscellaneous services. So to talk about construction phase services, I want to introduce Paul Henderson, who will serve as construction manager for the project. Up to you, Paul.
Thank you, Brian. Hey, so if you want to jump forward a one slide. Just while learning, so yeah, thanks, Brian. As Brian mentioned, my name's Paul Henderson. I'm a civil engineer with GHD, and I'll be the construction manager for the project. So basically, I'll be the the district's representative during constructions on the ground and looking out for your interests and making sure the project's built correctly and as intended, and as Brian said, in line with the permits. And so while I'm looking out for your interests, I'm also working with an impartial view, so making sure the contracts administered fairly for both parties, both for the district as the owner and for the contractor, which is Michael Roberts Construction, as you guys know. So if we can skip forward two slides. Okay, that's I'll carry on while we wait for that slide, so I'll run through our approach, and if you guys have got any questions, I'll be happy to respond to them later. So initially, we've, so we've been through the contract procurement, and as you know, we went through a pre-qualification process. We had three contractors invited, and two of those contractors provided bids, and the lowest conforming bid was from Michael Roberts Construction, who the district has approved and awarded contract to. And then, so through our approach, we have construction project management, and we we utilize a web-based app called Procore, and that enables us to have real-time records of the project, so you know, if we have a full-time inspector on site taking notes of what's happening during construction during the day. Anyone who we who we provide access to can jump onto the Procore web app and see what's happening in real time, including photos, and they have all of that daily logs and safety and all that kind of good stuff. So, and that's really good. An example of how good it is is I'm not taking a vacation during this project, but on other projects, I've taken vacations and gone home to New Zealand, and I can log on anytime and see the photos of what's happening on the ground, so it's a really good program. And we also use Procore to house all of our specifications and the plans and all of the other project documentation, so everyone has access to it at all times. And so in terms of actually the work occurring on the ground, we will have a full-time inspector, a specialist maritime and coastal construction inspector who's been involved in living shoreline work, so he knows exactly what to look out for and what we need to do and who to coordinate with and when. And, you know, he'll be recording exactly what's happening all day. All of the equipment that's on the ground, what what labor is being used by the contractor, what materials have arrived, tracking quantities, making sure all of these things are recorded so that hopefully we never have to look at them ever again, but all that, all those records are there if we need to, and and a lot of detail. So Tyler Kusunich is our, our inspector, and he's super detailed and so, and as Brian said, we'll be ensuring construction so we'll just be making sure the project's constructed per the contract and per the design intent, and making sure that all the requirements of the permits are being hit as the as the construction's built, and then at the completion of construction. We have a, we have
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Are we supposed to be looking at slides right now?
We were, yeah. I mean, the slide is, it's got some text and a photo of a hard hat, so it's not too detailed.
There we go. We don't see any slides at all, so whatever you're talking about and you're referring to, we aren't seeing, and we just got that now.
Okay, we can see them now. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Sorry about that. So I am at bullet point number six at this time. So two. So with with contract administration, that's Jim, just basically managing all the documentation for the projects. GHD will take care of all of that. Like I said, it'll be all coordinated within Procore, which is excellent for tracking. You know, the contractors' submittals, we have timeframes that we need to meet for reviewing those submittals and providing approvals for, you know, say, for example, a submission of their, the schedule for the project. We need to review that, and then we need to send it back, and that's all tracked, making sure that we're all on time, so the contractor's not delayed in their work and claiming for lost time. And it's also used for managing the payment application, so I'm not too sure if everyone here knows how that works, but basically the contractor will have a list of their quantities and what, how many, you know, the quantum that was built in that month, and then we will review it, we'll agree, and then we'll provide a recommendation to the the district to pay the contractor, and we'll make sure that's all fair, as I said, fair to both parties. So the contract administration also includes a request for information, and then just dealing with all of the coordinating and documentation and approvals. And then, so also as part of our role as the construction manager, we take on problem solving on the ground. So in a perfect world, everything, construction would run smoothly and conditions would be perfect, and there'd be no problems, but we will run into unknowns, but lucky you to be rest assured that we will anticipate these problems, we deal with them early, we don't let these problems lag, and we find solutions to problems, and where it's, I personally have a, like a fair amount of construction experience, but we also have at GHD and with our other partners in the project, we have significant experience in construction projects in the, you know, in the shoreline environment, so we have no shortage of experts to help out if needed. And then finally, in the the construction management, we will have the construction closeout, which, you know, we're making sure that the as-built drawings are accurate and complete. We're making sure that all of the as-built documentation, all of the records of the RFI submittals, all of our daily logs or photos, just a complete record of the construction, and we'll we'll put that into a final closeout report, which would be, you know, a record of what happened during construction of the West Trail. So that's it from me. I'm very much looking forward to getting out on site and getting this project built for you guys, and yeah, thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to.
Now I'll hand over to
Before you move on, can you review slide three for us? It wasn't displayed when you were talking about it.
Thank you, Jim.
This was a slot for Brian. If there's anything specific on there, I could probably answer number three and four.
Yeah, I think I spoke to this briefly.
I was talking about the, if possible, the slide before that.
Slide before this slide, three.
Entitled products that, yeah, there we go. The timetable's very important.
Sure. Okay, so we're in the construction phase. We we can start potentially as early as this month. A work plan has been submitted to us from MRC, and after we accept that work plan, they are, Paul, correct me here, they have twenty days to mobilize to the site. And then that would put them at a finishing construction in the January timeframe, January twenty twenty-two. And that would commence the monitoring and reporting phase of the project, which we have within our proposal, five years of the ten-year required monitoring phase. And we actually did have some more slides, so we had Brad and Bob are going to present. So can we, we think, Jim, can we flip to that, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's go. Okay, over to you, Brad.
Thanks, Brian. Hello, commissioners, hello, staff. Just a few quick points on the environmental compliance parts of the project. Now, this is a complicated project, as you're aware, from permitting perspective, just because of all the different elements. It involves an innovative approach. That's not something that's been done often in California, but something that the agencies are very interested in. It's a project that involves taking sand from one part of the harbor and moving it to another part of the harbor, working in the intertidal, there's a heron rookery, all kinds of sensitive habitat and species, so it's not surprising that there's also a lot of permitting challenges, environmental compliance issues. Generally, these are the main permits that we have. I'm not going to go through all of them, but the main ones are our Army Corps of Engineer, Regional Water Quality Control Board, and the Coastal Commission, also coordinating with the county and a lot of aspects of the project as well, and then a number of consultations with the various, you know, biological resource agencies, both state and federal. And next slide. So environmental compliance consists of two, for the purpose of this conversation, two elements. One is the compliance during the construction process, which of course is a big deal, and I'll talk about that in a second. But then the other one is the long-term monitoring, and like they say, no good deed goes unpunished. You know, we've got this great nature-based approach, an alternative to a seawall or something that would be, you know, have environmental impacts and not be preferable, yet, you know, it becomes a real challenge for permitting, and they require a long-term monitoring for ten years, both the biological aspects and then the physical performance by licensed engineers. So it's a, it's kind of a big burden, and that's what we're talking through today, all the different steps of this. And the reason that they require all this is because they really do want to learn more about the use of these nature-based approaches. And I think as we go on, it'll be easier and easier to implement, but it's just, you know, at this time's requirements. So ten years for the physical monitoring, and then five years minimum for the biological performance. We don't have Peter Bay, who's our botanist, on today, he's out on a site, but he will be doing monitoring of the plants, making sure that the, you know, the native plants are spreading and the invasions are staying away. And then we have to do annual reports every year to all of the agencies, as well as additional monitoring, if there's you know, certain trigger reach, like El Nino storm event, then we have to go out there and get measurements after that. And adaptive management is something that could be required, so if the design isn't performing as it's supposed to, there may be modifications to it in the future, and that's just part of this kind of dynamic approach that we're taking. It's not a solid structure, it's more of a, you know, as we say, a nature-based approach. Next slide. So during construction, we've got a lot of environmental compliance considerations to deal with. I've got a permit compliance matrix, and it's an interesting look, if anybody is interested in seeing kind of what these requirements that are placed on the different agencies on a project like this. You know, we've got eight pages of permit conditions, ranging from, you know, biological stuff to cultural resources, best management practices, mitigation measures, and then we've got another eleven-page report called mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which gets into the details of how you're going to deal with you know, all kinds of different biological issues during construction. So we've got a number of permit reporting requirements that go along with this, and I've got, you can see the image of the permit compliance matrix. The ones that are in orange, I believe, are the things where we have to hand in a report for. So there's going to be, in addition to the ongoing reports every year for ten years, you know, there's a number of different reports that we have to hand off during construction and right after construction. And part of my my task will be organizing site visits with the permitting agencies. As I mentioned, everybody's real interested in this project. They want to see how it's built, how it performs, learn a lot more about it, so they've asked that we kind of set up some site visits for the agencies to kind of show them what's going on. And then the other portion of my work is coordination with, you know, Paul and the construction monitor on the site, the biological monitor is going to have to be on the site, as well as a construction contractor, kind of making sure all the moving parts are moving, making sure the construction contractor is following all the rules they have to, and all the reporting's being done. On the bottom, I showed two pictures. These are two of the endangered species. One is endangered, says San Francisco garter snake, quite a beautiful animal. If you look at the photo, really bright. The other one is a California red-legged frog, which is a threatened species, and then we've got a number of ones in the water as well. And I just brought that up because they require, you know, the biological monitor to be on-site during all groundbreaking activities. Just to kind of point out the complex complexity of the project. And I also want to point out, interesting thing, when I did a little research on the San Francisco garter snake, it's funny to see that the main source of food is a California red-legged frog. Thought that was kind of ironic. I always like to point that out. I think that's it for that slide, Brian. Another element of the project is signage. So Coastal Commission for a project like this requires two types of signage. One of them is like a prohibitive sign. An example is on the right-hand side where it says, please keep off the dunes. What we're proposing, it's a small sign similar to that, that's consistent with the other signage along the Pillow Point Marsh. It's like a little brown rectangular sign like that, and it will be posted on the four-by-six posts. The middle picture shows a signage and access plan, so you can see the red things are the trailways going out, and it will be posts and ropes keeping people off the vegetated dunes. But the green triangle is our first proposed area for the other sign, which would be an interpretive sign, which says, here's what this project is about, you know, we're building a nature-based approach that will allow the animals and the plants to thrive, but it also provides protection for the coast and against erosion and all that stuff. And kind of points out that the example that we've provided shows a bunch of the different plant species and tells their names. So what we're proposing there is a sign similar to the one on the left, that the visual will be different, but the post will look similar to that, and then probably four to six of those keep-off-the-dune-type signs. And that's also part of this this contract as well, working with a graphic artist and getting these signs built up. I forget the exact specifications, but it's the highest quality printing, you know, anti-graffiti type of materials to ensure that it'll last for a long time. And the installation of that is part of the contractor's responsibility, once they're finished constructing the project. And that's about it for the signage.
Great. Thanks, Brad. Appreciate it. So we get into the the native planting side of things. So it was, this is Peter Bay's kind of leading this charge with subcontractor Go Native under him, kind of doing the the work in the, on the ground. But so Peter relieved the habitat planting, both the dune and the biofiltration basin. He'll direct the contractor about the timing and the specifics of of kind of where, what plants go where type of thing. Overall ecological goal of the system is to establish this resilient, dynamic native beach and fording plant community typical of the region. And the objectives are just in a broad sense, if Peter was here, he could speak to these more eloquently, eloquently, to make a geomorphically stable, so dynamically stable type of system that can can rebound after these extreme wave events or wind events. And also, we want to bring biological diversity to the harbor, so the plant palette he picked was intentional to to be kind of true to the area, but also kind of bring in some some species that are are not in the area. And then we also wanted to kind of have this wildlife lift and potentially create habitat for shorebirds within our project area. So within, that was it for construction phase services. We'll get into the post-construction phase services now. Post-construction phasers, those Brad alluded to these, the physical and biological monitoring and reporting phases or programs. Key features to these both are to just to measure the performance of the dune, the stormwater features, and the native habitat that we introduced. These monitoring measures, as Brad alluded to, are project permit-specific items. The third item here is a dune maintenance that we have, the biannual maintenance of the dune and biofiltration basin by Go Native. So start with an overview of the physical monitoring program. This program is aimed to try and understand the physical changes of the living shoreline, so shape and structure of the living shoreline and the different components that make up that the living shoreline, the cobble, the rock, fingers, and the sand. So ESA will be leading the data collection and analysis work as part of this, and I wanted to And I wanted to have Bob Battallo kind of speak to the approach on this data collection. Off to you, Bob.
Thanks, Brian. Hi, Commissioners and staff. Bob Battallo here, I'm with Environmental Science Associates, I'm a senior engineer. And I'm standing in for Louis White, who's off on vacation. He's our project manager, engineer for us. So I'm going to talk about the physical monitoring program. These are the elements. Number one, topography, which is surveying the grades of the trail and the beach. We're interested if there's any erosion or other changes, we want to capture those. Secondly, regional data gathering. These are publicly available data that, that we can all get on the internet. We download the data and organize them and I'll show you an example, but this consists of waves and tides and winds. For this, you know, project, the local wind waves as well as the wind-blown sand are important. Third item is photo documentation. So twice a year, we'll be going out and taking pictures of the conditions and also if there's a big event we want to capture. Number four is the extreme event documentation. That would be, you know, taking pictures and the like. And number five, the data analysis and reporting, and that's just kind of reducing all the data and presenting it in a way that's pertinent to the annual monitoring. Next slide, please. So this is an example of the number one item, the topography. This is from the design phase of the project. The shaded area represents aerial photography that is and LiDAR. We did both actually on this project, but is used to create a topographic map. It's pretty cool stuff. And then the, well, in, in the post-construction monitoring, the extent of the drone mapping or the topo mapping will extend farther south to the base of the breakwater where some sand is being sourced for construction. But this is an example. And then the lines show the profiles along which ground surveys are done. I also want to point out that there's a number of benchmarks here where the team has set up already the location and elevation of these points, which are used for construction and monitoring, et cetera. And these are all put together into a digital terrain model from which you can compare to prior and subsequent mapping efforts and get a difference in elevation and difference in volumes, et cetera. Next slide, please. This is an example of data that we'll be gathering off the internet, as I mentioned before. This is from the design phase of this project. And this is kind of a busy slide, I'll just go quickly through it. On the horizontal axis is time, this was 2019 to 2020, I think, I can't really see it, I'm pretty sure those are the dates. But the top panel are waves, the blue and the red are two different wave measurements. One's an actual instrument and the other one is a synthetic. So that's wave height over time. And then the third panel down is wave period, which is an important consideration corresponding to the upper two panels. The third panel down is wave direction. And it's just really interesting, if you look at the blue and then the red and then the yellow, you can see that the wave directions go from northwest to more west to south. As you get closer to shore, the blue being offshore, the red being nearshore and the yellow is from a gauge that we had put in the harbor. So it's, this is really useful information. And then the bottom panel are tides. The, the black squiggly is the tide that you can down, the recorded tide you can, actually that's projected tide that you can download off the internet. You can also get the observed tides. And the reason for this type of thing is this shows December 2019, when the West Trail was damaged. And it's kind of in the middle of this, then you can see some big waves in the blue at the top and in the second panel and the yellow. And there were some high water levels, et cetera. So this will help us, you know, in an efficient way, kind of diagnose what's happened and maybe why. Next slide, please. I think this is my last slide. An example of photo documentation, this is not at, at West Trail. This is at Surfers, Surfers Point in Ventura, another living shoreline project that we designed, been in place for going on 10 years now. And at the, the top two photographs show a post-storm event. We had a huge swell in Ventura that caused damages. And this is what our design project, you can see the, on the upper left, the wet sand, which shows where the wave run-up extents were during this event. And then on the upper right, you can see debris that washed up. This helps us kind of understands how, how high the waves got essentially. In the lower right panel, the following spring, there was exposed cobble and then in the fall, the sand had returned and there was no action needed. Everything was fine. That's the other thing you want to know with these monitoring plans, whether or not you need to do anything or not. So I think that, was that my last slide, Brad? I mean, Brian?
That was it, Bob.
Okay.
Thanks so much.
I'm around if you have questions. Thank you.
Perfect. So a couple more slides here, the biological monitoring program, I'll, I'll touch on quickly. It seeks to understand the performance of our created habitats, how well the native habitats establish, how well the system can fend off invasive species, sea rockets, kind of one of our, one of our main things. And also the ice plant or carpophrotes, its potential to, to try to move into this created habitat area. Also, how well the system can rebound after these extreme events. Can it, it's going to be a seed stock within the dunes. Can that seed stock regenerate on its own? It really needs kind of help from us. We're also qualitatively going to assess how wildlife is using these creative habitat areas, not quantitatively, but qualitatively. So our last service that I, we kind of touched on a couple of times was to maintain the dune biannually with subcontractor go native. Help us remove invasives, trash and do other general kind of housekeeping activities while they're out there, led by Peter Bay and also the project team. So I spoke to the construction schedules, I will kind of move past that, but you know, potentially this month we get started. And that would put us at a January 2022 stop. Completion of the construction would trigger the start of this five-year monitoring program. I also want to mention that native planting would happen once these elements are constructed, obviously, but also timing around the rain. So we would need the sediment, the dredge sediments from this other area in the harbor to kind of leach out the salinity, basically. So we need like a good hard rain after we build the dune so that the sediments can leach out. I want to thank you for your time or available for questions.
Okay, I'd like to open this up for questions from the commissioner or any comments?
Virginia, I have a question. Is the, the trail going to be closed to the public during construction?
The trail, can I speak to that?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Yes, okay, the trail might be closed during construction and Paul helped me here. But there's always going to be access, lateral access around. So there's never going to be, going to be a, a blockage of access to, to Maverick Beach.
But you're not, you're not closing the parking lot or the, the, the trail. There's still be trail access around the construction for the public.
Trail access around construction, there'd be staging within the parking lot.
Okay.
The West Point Ave parking lot.
I assume that reduces the parking lot capacity then probably.
Significantly, correct. Yeah.
Do we want to, or maybe this is a question to the district. Do we want to post some warnings or just informational signage about the construction when it starts so that people don't drive out there? It's, there's not a lot of room out there, it's a small parking lot, so.
Yeah, Bill, we, we will, we'll be doing that, Commissioners MK, just as we have before, like when we, when we resurfaced that parking lot there, there is alternative parking lot as you're driving out to the West Trail parking lot. So we'll, we'll be looking at other alternatives to direct people to and we'll get the word out through social media and our distribution list and postings. Great, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners MK. Commissioner Lourainis, I think I see you unmuted. I'm not sure if you have any questions or comments.
I, I do, I'd like to wait just a second, I have a few more notes I want to write.
Okay, no problem. Commissioner Waring? Do you have any questions or comments?
No, no questions, but thank you for that presentation, really well done, as always.
Yes, I agree, thank you, thank you. And I'm glad to see that the progress is, you know, happening. And that we're probably going to hopefully open this at the beginning or be done with this project within the first quarter of 2022, it sounds like. Commissioner Lourainis, do you mind if I, I, I'm just going to open this up to public comment now, if there are any members of the public? And then let me know when you're ready to make your comments, is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, so I'd like to open the discussion up to public comments. If there are any members of the public who would like to chime in on the presentation by GHD, please raise your hand. Michelle Dragony. Thank you.
Unfortunately, President Chinkarali, it looks like the, the attendee would have to be promoted to panelist in order to talk. And so I just wanted to make sure that's okay and I'll go ahead and do that. It's due to the version of Zoom being used.
Yes, that's fine. I, I mean, because then we can let her not be a panelist when she's done with her public comment for two minutes, correct?
Perfect, yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
So Michelle, if you could just let us know and I'll start the timer, let us know when you're able to, to talk.
Michelle, are you there?
It looks like we're having technical difficulties, Michelle. It's, I, it's saying that it's the version of Zoom you're using. If you want to call in on the phone as a caller, we'll look out for that.
Okay, why don't we? Oh, it looks like she's going to ask the question in chat. So Michelle, I see you are in chat now. So if you'd like to ask your question now, that'd be great. Or if you, you know, just, I'll keep public comments open for, okay, I see your question. Her question is about the blue heron nesting during the winter.
I can respond to that.
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, so there were a number of, you know, we obviously had to have rookery survey and some avian work done before the project. And the permit conditions right now are saying that work conducted after October 1st, outside of the breeding season, nesting season, we don't have to conduct a, another avian survey. However, you know, there's stipulate, there's, there's requirements in the mitigation measurement document that addresses what to happen. I think the assumption is that if there's any herons that arrived during construction, then they're not going to be subject to disturbance because they're already going to be assumed to kind of be used to that noise of construction. But because of the timing of the project, there aren't any major concerns with that rookery. If we had done it before October 1st, there would have been a number of requirements as far as doing surveys and what happens if, you know, a bird starts nesting there.
Thank you, Brad.
And Michelle, if you want to send me an email, I can provide more specifics on that and all the measures and everything.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle. Commissioner Lourainis, I don't know if you're ready, but I don't see any other hands up right now.
Yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Please, thanks.
I've got a few things. So first, I'd just like to say I'm, I'm really pleased with the work you guys have done, both ESA and everyone else, GHD and Brad. And I was really happy to see you in this project. You've got a lot of history with this, with this area and you guys all have done a really great job. And you know, as, as you know, this project's been highlighted in many places, not just in the local newspapers, but in, in some of the engineering meetings. And now everyone's going to watch and see what happens when you actually get down and start doing the work. And so my concerns were related to that. And I wanted to say is that I have full confidence in you guys. Nevertheless, I still have some questions. So with that, with that disclaimer, here I go. I went through the agreement and one aspect of it that I found missing, and maybe you guys can delay my fears a little bit, is public engagement. As you know, Bob, you know, for, just from, from your travels along that West Trail to go out to Mavericks, that there's not a step you can take without seeing dogs and kids and members of the public most any day of the week and especially on weekends. And they're all going to be watching what happens there. There's, there's a very strong environmental community here from all aspects, you know, there's people that from Audubon who care about the birds, remanel folks, this project will be doing some work in the water. So there will be some concerns about what's happening there. I've even had people talk to me worried about what's going to happen to the inverts that are along the trail where the work's going to be done. So there's no lack of scrutiny that's going to happen here. Since I didn't see any, any plans to engage the public directly, I was wondering if you guys could tell me a little bit about that, these projects, especially the, the land restoration that's going to happen along the dunes. They almost always work better if you got some public engagement in there and maybe even public helping out in some way. And I don't see that in this and that, I just think that that's, that's potentially going to cause some trouble, especially if you look at what, what has happened on Pillar Point Bluffs where go native has done some work, you know, they, they did a lot of work there for the air force and the public was a little bit confused about who was doing the work at first. And then it wasn't clear where the native plants were planted versus the trails that were adjacent to it. I can, with dunes, it'll be a little more obvious. But maybe, maybe you guys can speak to that. It would, it would be great to, in my opinion, to actually have a, a meeting with some of the local environmental groups and, and the public before the project starts, just to engage them a little bit and let them know what is happening. If you look at the list of people that are at this, this meeting that started at one o'clock in the middle of the day, there's, there's hardly anyone that represents those groups because they're, they're all working. So we'll start off with that, if you don't mind.
Yeah. I think it's a good point. I mean, and we're certainly open to that, to having that pre-construction meeting to try to get that word out as best we can. I wanted to speak to like the during construction, like kind of personal contacts that happen, if you will, like just somebody just walking up, like what's going on? You know, we just worked on the Cardiff Living Shoreline Project, which is another very highly trafficked beach. And there's lots of that, you know, from the, the naysayer types to the, this is great, let's do more of these. Tyler, who will be our construction inspector, will, will be the same person, he was on Cardiff, he'll be working this project and he's, he's very good with the public and, and try to, you know, just trying to educate and, and diffuse if need be. Or, or just kind of go up the ladder type of response, but.
Yeah, just, just on Tyler, Brian, sorry to cut in, you will not find a more diplomatic and helpful person. He is really good. Really good.
So and then there's, I like the idea of like community planting events. It's something we were doing on Cardiff that the community really got behind. I'm not sure how to, maybe we can talk offline about how to roll that out in the most like here and what, what kind of group would be interested in, in doing that. But we've, we've seen students come out or just kind of environmental enthusiasts or activist types within the community come out and help. I mean, we got, we're going to need to maintain this thing, invasive removal. I mean, we got, we're going to need to maintain this thing, invasive removal. And, uh, you know, there's just those little things that that kind of add up. So I think there's definitely opportunity for the community to, to get engaged.
Brian.
Go ahead.
Oh yeah, I just wanted to chime in too. And Ed, you put me in touch with Kate Dickey from Sea Crest School. And she's, she's putting together a curriculum for the whole school. I think it's K through eight um, for a like marine biology type program. And we had a couple of conversations with our botanist, Peter Bay as well, because he had some ideas. And she's putting together a curriculum that's going to involve monitoring of these native plants and the seed stocks and stuff. It looks really interesting. As well as some other potential ideas with, I think it's called coastal milk fetch, certain, certain plants that they can actually raise and then plant and monitor over the years. So there is some work and I, I would love to see more of that kind of stuff happening as well. Some of the planting is kind of technical, some of the, like, you know, beginning work. Um, but there is certainly a lot of projects, all that ice plant, if that were to be mechanically removed either during this project or as another effort, um, you know, with equipment, then a great community project could be for people to come in and remove the seedlings as they emerge over the years. That's pretty easy to stay on top of that if you mechanically remove the big mats. And then that would allow the seed stock from this to kind of spread throughout the harbor. And then you can start kind of interspersing. So there are, you know, a lot of great opportunities and uh one with Sea Crest Schools, just one example, but I, I, I think that's a great idea.
That's kind of where I was going. And I think we'll just have to, not at this meeting, but maybe along the way have some discussions. I can, I can talk to some of you offline about getting the community engaged. And there are a lot of folks here that would be very interested in in a somewhat formalized way of, of doing the restoration and also as, as Brian, you stated, helping maintain it because it's, there are so many people there and you know, there's kids and dogs and a lot of action and the only way you're, you're going to keep people for engaged in it is with the community helping out. And you have a community, I think, here that will be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to jump in real quick. You know, the Army Corps of Engineers is placing sand up at Ocean Beach right now and they have a, a placard or kind of like a storyboard explaining what's going on as well as having somebody there. And I, I, I think that could be helpful. Um, because that person also can has, I've, I've noticed, you know, told people where they can go and can't go and how to get around just basic stuff. Like a docent or something. I don't, I don't know how we would program that. And then um yeah, I, I do think once the surf gets up, it'll be interesting with the parking impacts, but there's that old parking lot farther down or up the road where we used to park decades ago. So we'll just have to I'm happy to help if Ed and, and others, if, if you want to get together.
Can I, can I just chime in here for a little bit? Because I'm not totally disagreeing with what Commissioner Laranis is saying, but I do think that it's important that, you know, the entire board knows what's going on and like these offline conversations, you know, include the entire board because there are different subsections of the public that may have different viewpoints. And I think they all should be listened to. All of the viewpoints are worth listening to. So the offline conversations or, you know, ex parte conversations, I don't think may necessarily be as helpful for the broad public to understand what's going on. So I, I don't know, Jim, how we should do this. Because I don't want to delay the project, but I think it's important that ex parte conversations, you know, don't really happen with just a subsection of the public. I mean, Brad, what, or Bob, I mean, what, what have y'all, how have y'all handled these kinds of situations? And that's not saying that uh, you know, um, the public input isn't, or the public dialogue isn't important, but I think it's got to be a broad section of the public and ex parte conversations don't promote that, in my opinion.
So this is Bob. I, hopefully I didn't initiate that concern, but I haven't had any ex parte conversations with anybody Ed or others, but I was just offering my assistance if I had the direction to do something. I, I would.
I do have an answer to that. And it's like, I've said this before that um, the way to deal with situations like this is to have at some kind of committee meeting, meeting that, that meets at a time when the public can actually engage and have these kinds of discussions. And notice it in such a way that any commissioner who has an interest in it can be fully engaged, not just sit there and listen because you got two commissioners as part of a committee meeting. So if you want to.
Are you suggesting like the public workshops, Commissioner Laranis, that we've had or what?
Um, I, I would say you can call it what you like and, and notice it in in what's important, I think, is to notice, notice a meeting like this in such a way that everyone can participate and give it enough time so that the public can, and, and have the meeting at a time when you can maximize the number of folks that can show up. And before you, you actually have the meeting, make sure that you've communicated to the people that have an interest in this. And that would be by by working with folks like Bob, Brad and myself and other commissioners that can bring the public in.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I think you probably have other comments and questions, right?
I do, but I can, I can wait. Anybody?
I don't see any other hands raised from any commissioners, but if you have any questions or comments, commissioners, wiring and Zimki, this would be the time to voice them.
I, I have no further comments.
So the, the other not comment so much as a, just a question and somewhat of a concern is signage is a you guys probably know is, is often a big deal to the public, you know, where you place the signs, what they say and, and how they're presented and even if you don't change anything, I think it would be also useful to have the, have examples and maybe talk to some of the folks, maybe in a meeting like we just discussed, to get some input from the public on the kinds of signage and, and locations. I've worked with um with um the National Marine Sanctuary Collaborative. And we, we've had lots of discussions on signage with with other local agencies and everybody's got an opinion. And, you know, if you, if you work with folks, you number one, you you'll likely have a result that most people will like. And the other is, um I know we have a lot of, a lot of folks in the community that have expertise in this sort of thing. And you'd end up with a better result, I think. So that would be another aspect of, of just meeting with the public before construction begins.
One comment on the signage is that we have some time on that. Yeah, I think I agree with all your points about pre-construction, pre-construction coordination, but as far as developing that interpretive panel, which I know can be a, an effort in its own. We have till, you know, January or beyond to, to put that in the ground. So I think the lead time's better for that to engage.
Also, Ed. Yeah. Which, just to put in a, a, make a quick point. The Greater Farallon Sanctuary is trying to get funding to redo all those signs. So there'll be some movement on that soon. I spoke with the education director about the signage for this to kind of get her input on that. Materials, messaging, all that stuff. But I think you're, you're right on with that. Um, it can become, you know, kind of a slippery slope. The sign that I use as an example was from a different Living Shoreline project. And that was like a $30,000 sign just because of all the meetings and all the stuff. Our sign is like a 5,000, you know, dollar sign. Um, I think we, we definitely get some input. But the more, you know, we kind of have to limit that, have something for this project or kind of rethink the way that we're, we're proposing it. And I, you know, I'm happy I've done that effort before with the, the signage and stuff and it can you know, everybody has their own version of, of what works.
Right.
And you can come up with a great sign or you can come up with something that's completely worthless because you're trying to capture everybody's ideas. But yeah, I'm with you on that.
Yeah, I do understand that. I've been in some of these signage meetings.
Hello. Commissioner Laranis, did you just get cut off or can you hear me?
I think he's frozen.
Oh, okay.
I mean.
Okay, I, I don't, Ed, can you hear us?
I'd like to keep moving on this item if we can, President Chen Corrali.
As they're capturing the, the community input pretty well.
President Chen Corrali, my internet just went down very briefly as well. And I'm also on the coast. So I think there might have just been a quick little outage if Commissioner Laranis.
Okay, okay. Then let me just, um, can you hear me? Can you hear us, Commissioner Laranis? I think I see you moving. So hopefully you're connected again.
I was talking to the ether. Yeah, I'm just saying that, that, um, having having uh Brad work with the NOAA folks on signage, that, that'll help because I've been in those kinds of meetings and it can be a giant project. It doesn't have to be. I think the, they're trying to coordinate with everyone because there is a lot of, a lot of concern about these signs, both from marine mammal folks and so on. So I think that's going to come together without too much trouble anyway. As long as somebody's talking to them would be great.
Yeah, Ed, we have, we have had a lot of commissioners, we have had a lot of discussion with regard to ensuring that the construction has a little impact on access as is possible. You know, we're trying to keep the footprint in the West Hill parking lot as small as possible while still enabling the project to move forward quickly, of course, because obviously we all want it to to get done and, and all of the construction to stop as quickly as possible. And then we want to a storyboard like, like what's been discussed would probably go a long ways. So we could, we could potentially have a storyboard in place, kind of explain to everyone that may be coming after construction hours, et cetera, what, what's going on there, you know, why their, their parking is being limited, et cetera, you know, in a positive manner. You're explaining what, you know, how that's going to benefit them in the long run. And then we, we also have been along with the, you know, keeping access. We've also been discussing in depth the, the need to, to allow the community to continue to be involved, just as we've allowed the community through all the meetings that we've had over the last few years regarding this project to be involved and, and and listen to their input. That's what's helped us get where we're at today. And with a much better project with the Living Shoreline Alternative. And ultimately, we'll continue that and and be bringing to the board during construction multiple updates on the construction. And, you know, um, we'll be having some update, no matter what. Every single board meeting, which of course, any commissioner can, can pull that, that maybe consent item, if it wasn't anything significant, to ask more questions about it or to be able to raise concerns that have been brought to their attention. Um, but in addition, we will be bringing you know, from, from the feedback that we gather, you know, onsite or people contacting us, including commissioners, we'll be able to, to address those concerns in a discussion item as we're progressing. For instance, I, I would anticipate as we are putting together, as Brad's working with the, the whole GHD team and others to, to come up with a first alternative for a informative inform, information sign, you know, that will be more permanent on what it looks like and the verbiage and placement. We will be able to, to bring that, you know, along with other things to the board for, for discussion, you know, so the public can weigh in and the board can weigh in based on, you know, feedback they've received.
I have one last comment, if I may.
Please.
So thanks for that, John. I, like I said, within, in my disclaimer, I have full confidence in both our staff and the folks that are doing this project. You know, you've worked a lot on it and, and it's true, the presentations you guys have done and the public meetings you've done have been most excellent with this. So I have no problems with that. And my comments were mostly directed at just some of the things that weren't in the agreement. And I feel much better having had this discussion with you all. And finally, I think this project to me represents the beginning of some work that we can continue to do at the harbor with respect to shoreline enhancement and public access. You know, it's great that the permitting agencies forced us to do the monitoring because I think we're going to learn a lot about shoreline protection within the harbor and how to continue this. And so I'm looking forward to bringing more of this type of work to the harbor in the future, specifically further to the west on West Trail. And then also on the, what I guess would be the southeast side of the harbor where Surfers Beach and RV Park is. So thanks, you guys. It's great having you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ryer, I see that your hand is raised.
Yeah, I'd like to um make a motion that we approve entering into a professional services agreement with Districts West Hill, Living Shoreline Project Design Engineering Consulting, GHD. As stated in our packet.
I will second that.
Thank you. Okay, any last commissioner comments? I think we've had a great discussion. If not, let's do a roll call vote, please. Melanie?
Commissioner Zemke.
Aye.
Commissioner Laranis.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen Corrali.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryer.
Aye.
So that motion carries. Thank you so much for being here, Brian, Brad and Bob and Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. And keep up the great work. Thank you.
Well, thanks.
So let's move on to item 11, which is authorize increase in temporary staffing services contracts by $350,000 and increased capital expenditure appropriations by $350,000. Julie.
Yes, good afternoon, President Chen Corrali. Item 11 is presented to you this afternoon for consideration and supporting the needed additional staffing resources required to ensure the successful implementation of the Enterprise Resource Planning System or otherwise known as that ERP system. Due to the amount of work required to implement in the RP system, it is necessary to hire temporary employees to support the ongoing operations while our current employees implement the new system. Um, there is an estimated date of completion of the ERP system of May of 2022. And on April 17th, 2019, the Harbor Commission approved $300,000 for the hiring of temporary staff. Since that time, the district spent $215,572, leaving a balance of $84,428, which is available to spend on temporary staffing needs to temporarily fill our current future positions. So that's going to stay available for our operating budget. So today we're just talking about the ERP project and asking the commission to consider approving the spending of $350,000. Um, in the capital expenditure budget, there is a line item in there that estimates that estimated temporary staffing and other costs as $400,000. Of that $350,000 is due to the temporary staffing needs. And there will be another $50,000 available in that line item for any equipment that we might need associated with implementation of the project. And it the funding approved with this action should be sufficient to fund the temporary staffing needs for the duration of the RP implementation. And if some reason we require additional funds, we would return to the Harbor Commission at that time for further approvals. In summary, staff recommends that this commission authorize the general manager to execute service agreements with Robert Half or other such agencies for temporary staffing needs as appropriate for a total not to exceed additional $350,000 and increased capital expenditure appropriations in the same amount to be funded by available working capital balance. If you have any questions or want more information on the ERP system implementation, I would be happy to answer those.
Okay, I'll take Commissioner comments and questions for Julie, if there are any. If there aren't, let's take public comment. I see a hand raised. John Olin.
Thank you, President Corrali. I'm just trying to wrap my head around this one. Really wasn't what's on my agenda for today. But is this like money you did not know you were going to have to spend? It's $300,000 to implement a software in office when you only have six or eight people that work in that office that would ever interact with that software? Seems somewhat astounding. I just can't picture it. What is actually going on? Are we doing a lot of data entry that has to be transferred by hand? The part about needing equipment, I mean, the only equipment you could possibly need would be keyboards and computers. That means there's nothing else there. You don't, I don't get it. Any rate, maybe staff could expound on a, was this $300,000 expected to be spent when you first approved this ERP? And what exactly needs to be done to implement an ERP that would pretty much take a big chunk of your staff out of commission? Thank you. Please mute me.
I'd be happy to address some of those questions. In answer to the question if we anticipated this in the capital budget that was approved by this commission, there was approximately $800,000 in total. $200,000 of that was the cost that was going to be charged for the implementation of the software. And these are ERP systems are very complex when it comes to governmental accounting. We did go through an RFP process, and $200,000 was in range of some of the other software programs that support governmental entities. The $400,000 was an additional line item to help backfill staff. And, you know, we have a really small staff to support all of the functions that we do with all the legal requirements that we have, all the reporting requirements that we have. There is going to be four staff members assigned to this project, including myself. And at least three of those staff members will probably be working on that project full time. We've done our best to try to keep the backfills at a minimum. It will require maybe some overtime by our current staff to keep our operations running. But at the end of October, our plan is to have all temporary staff trained. We're pulling in some resources from Miller Point Harbor and Oyster Point Marina to to help our operations continue. Things like paying all our bills and doing payroll. We have to populate a new ERP system with all of the information that we have in the old one. We're going to be adding lots of functionality. Every single employee in the district will be required to use the system in the end. And one of the big things that's going to happen is that our customers will be able to go online and look at and pay for their bills, which is is not currently happening. We haven't had a new system. I think this one was put in in 1996. So we have a lot, lot of work to do to get this project up and running. So I hope that answers some of your questions. I don't know if I hit on them all, but I'd be happy to talk to you, John, offline, if you want additional information on that.
Thank you, Julie. So are there any other public comments? Okay, I see Commissioner Wiering's hand. Commissioner Wiering.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the general manager to execute service agreements with Robert Half Account Temp's office team as stated in our packet.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Hey, any further discussion by the commission? Okay, Melanie, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lorraine.
Yes.
Commissioner Chen Crowley.
Aye.
Commissioner Wiering.
Aye.
Commissioner Zemke.
Aye.
So that motion carries. Thank you very much, Julie. And let's move on to item 12, which is the commercial activity permit for California Action Sports. John Moran, please kick off this discussion.
If I may, President Chen Corrali, before John brings this issue back. The board asked or made a motion, and it was approved, to have a special meeting at Oyster Point to tour, and then consider this as a commercial activity permit. Several attempts over the last several weeks or since that meeting, the last board meeting, were made to try to schedule a special meeting in a reasonable time to be able to be able to act on this permit as required by our ordinances. And just based on everybody's schedule, we weren't able to do that. So what we did as staff is developed a more robust staff report with a lot of pictures and satellite images of Oyster Point to demonstrate kind of a virtual walk around. And hopefully, that meets the expectation of the board, and that we can take action on this commercial activity permit as required by our ordinances.
So, Jim, I think that Commissioner Matush, I think, if I remember correctly, made that motion. And so he is not here today. Have you talked to him? And was he satisfied with this act, this virtual, well, I guess somewhat virtual tour of pictures for Oyster Point?
He's aware of the more robust package, but I don't think I can tell the board on what another commissioner was saying outside the board meeting.
Yeah, no, I know. Okay, but he's aware of all of this then, because he made the motion. I just wanted to make sure. Because it's in it's in the packet, so I'm assuming he's aware.
And with that, I'd like to turn it over to John.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As General Manager was, as just stated, we we also did have an urgency from the applicant as well wants to get this resolved. This will be the the third month that the District Board of Harbor Commissioners has considered this commercial activity permit application. And so we want the board today to consider this commercial activity permit application submitted by California Action Sports at Oyster Point Marina. The commercial activity permit applicant is requesting approval to conduct a kiteboarding and watersports instruction business departing from Oyster Point Marina. If approved, the commercial activity permit pursuant to the terms and conditions of the commercial activity permit permittee will be allowed to operate a kiteboarding and watersports business departing from Oyster Point Marina. Permittee would pick up passengers at Oyster Point and facilitate watersports activities in surrounding waters outside district boundaries. Perspective permittee has already paid the application fee and would be required to pay deposit of 3% of gross or pay deposit and pay 3% of gross sales and services provided. Customers with parking designated spaces as available on a first come, first served basis. The applicant is currently a tenant at Oyster Point Marina, would meet customers at the dock gate and accompany them to the vessel, ensuring social distancing. Applicant would adhere to all county and state guidelines for COVID-19 safety and would include a detailed operations plan consistent with those guidelines. The district already has one watersports commercial activity permit at Oyster Point. The past, the district has had two watersports caps at Oyster Point. Both required to pay the district 3% of total gross sales and services provided historically. Historically, it has been demonstrated that there's not great demand for kiteboard instruction, as evidenced by the reported income to the district. Therefore, it could be argued that having multiple competing caps could make none of them viable. However, this applicant asserts there is, in fact, ample demand for several watersports instruction businesses at Oyster Point Marina, and believes that he's got unique capabilities to advertise and make the businesses viable. The board, as the general manager said, previously considered this cap in July and August and asked that we potentially put together a meeting on site. However, time constraints were made that end up having to be postponed for an undetermined amount of time. Therefore, with applicants' concerns of an sense of urgency, we wanted to to get an answer for our applicant as quickly as possible. So we're trying our best today to bring back to the board kind of a virtual site visit and some more information. And we'll be able to to answer more questions as well. So I'm going to share my screen now and and kind of go over with the with everybody so the board and the public fully understands kind of where we're at with with the site challenges. Can everybody see the screen now?
I can. I think you're fine in terms of screen sharing, John.
Okay, what I've got here is just a bird's eye view of a pretty recent satellite picture of the Oyster Point Marina and the adjacent landside peninsula. As you can see there, it, for those of you that are familiar with it, the roadway has changed considerably. And Drake Marina is is simply no longer there. It's been completely demolished. Are you guys able to see my cursor right now?
Yeah, I can.
I can.
Okay, this is where Drake Marine used to be, which is a was a large boatyard that serviced the vessels. This area here that I'm pointing to where the the P is used to be a parking lot area that was close to the docks one through six here. The applicant's boat is on Dock Two, which is here. Now, this whole area is a construction zone. And I'll be able to show you here in a minute where people are forced to park at present. This area here where my cursor is, is an area where the kiteboard businesses and the current kiteboard commercial activity permittee that's already approved there does all of their kiteboard instruction. And this area here, this little ramp here is the coyote, is the kayak and kiteboard access to the shallow Bay Area. So this is a little ramp specifically for kiteboard kayaks, watersports. It's relatively close, as you can see, to the area where most of the instruction, hands-on landside instruction generally took place. However, this area that you're seeing here is no longer grassy, a grassy flat area with few trees. It's now, as you see here, a large mound of of dirt due to the ongoing construction there. So the the area where landside kiteboarding and watersports instruction can take place is has been considerably limited due to the ongoing development and construction. However, the applicant, who I'm sure is on here today and will be making some comments, is asking the District Board of Harbor Commissioners to consider only allowing him to pick up passengers that will drive in and park in the temporary parking area and walk down and go through the temporary dock ramps all the way to his boat, which is on Dock Two. And they will be departing on the boat out of the Marina. And then the actual instruction, again, will take place out here in this rather shallow Bay Area to the south of the of the Oyster Point Peninsula. So as you can see here, this this in this picture, it shows where the old parking used to be. There's no longer parking there at all. This new roadway has been put in there now. This is all a construction zone where they're raising the elevation of all this to contend with sea level rise. Therefore, a temporary parking area has been created in this area here. And all of the tenants, all of the hundreds of tenants that are in docks one through six here must park here and walk across temporary walkways down to the docks five, six gangway. And then walk down and across here where there is a temporary float put in place. Then walk down across the entryway to docks three, four. And walk across another temporary floating dock access to Dock Two. And then go to the applicant's vessel where he has a slip with the district. That is approximately 1,100 feet from the temporary parking area through the construction zone, across the temporary access areas to Dock Two. Here is the picture of the temporary lot. And here is a picture of the temporary access going down through the construction site down to the temporary floating access docks that go all the way down to the farthest one you can see down there where they could then access Dock Two. So guests would be walking that entire way. Here's a picture of the applicant's vessel on Dock Two that he reports to to use to unless he plans to get another vessel. This is the one he's currently got with us. That he plans to use. That he plans to use to load up with all the equipment and take people out into that bay area and launch to do the instruction. This is just a picture of the existing kayak kiteboard water sports launch site, which is land side. However, the the applicant does not appear to be desiring to 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 access or use use this. This is the shallow area where predominantly where the water sports kiteboarding instruction, et cetera, takes place. It's kind of a protected bay area. And that's all I've got. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions from commissioners? I see Commissioner Lorenz, you unmuted yourself. I don't see any hands, but when I look at the unmuted screens, I just, I'm gonna assume that you might want to make a comment. So I don't mean to pick on anyone. Commissioner Lorenz.
I do have a comment.
Okay.
Thanks for the photographic tour, John and Jim. It's it's helpful to see what's going on down there. I'm still mystified why we had to go to this length to prove this. I I see no reason not to allow this person to give it a try. And and like, like I said, the first time this came before us, we'll have an opportunity to deny it if things don't go well, which I expect they should go well. And secondly, I think the tour gives the public who we don't have very many members of the public watching, but it does give people a view of what's going on down at Oyster Point if they don't have not had an opportunity to go down there. There's very limited true public access there, and we're bound to lose more once this construction is underway. But that's all I have. Thanks.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? I mean, we have, we do have public comment. But Commissioner Zimpy, I'll take your comment or question. I see you're unmuted.
No, I just unmuted myself. I just wanted to say that I was out at Oyster Point yesterday afternoon and did look around and the it is still very much a construction site, but as Commissioner Lorenz said, I really don't see any reason to object to this commercial activities permit. I think it would work, work okay and give him an opportunity to see if he can make it to try. So I'm in favor.
Okay, let me just open this up for public comment. I see a hand, John Ollum.
Thank you, President Corrali. Yeah, this, I guess Tom Matouche found something better to do today. He's pretty much the reason the applicant had to jump through these hoops multiple times for some reason. Tom, Commissioner Matouche really has a problem with this applicant. To his credit, he did say he wanted to build a forty thousand foot square foot shopping center smack dab in what little open spaces left out there. And I guess Commissioner Matouche did not want to face the applicant today. Something as you should know is I did go look around. There are several kite schools in the Bay Area, but there aren't lots of them and they all have filled booked up schedules. Second, the current applicant made it very clear that he had no problem with other competition being out there. He just didn't like the current applicant. So from you, it's already clear that your current vendor out there views that there's plenty of business for everybody. And last, really, you have no way of judging how much business could be developed out there based on the experience of one person. You can be the best kiteboard surfer or kiteboard trainer in the world, but if you don't know how to market yourself, you're not going to get business. You might be a jerk. I don't know. You just won't get to keep business. Maybe it's just a bad location. I don't know, but you don't know either. So please, don't put this guy through any more pain. Let him have his shot at it. It's American way. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? Okay, I'm gonna close public comment. Oh, hold on. Oh, no, I see another hand raised. Sorry. For the number ending six, zero, two, three. Melanie, do you see the the raised hand?
He should have the ability to smell now.
Okay.
They've been on. They've been unmuted, Commissioner Corrali.
Thank you, Lizzie. Caller, are you able to speak? It looks like the caller is on mute. So if you can hear me, you can unmute yourself and please make your comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, this is Jeff Caskill, Wind Over Water. My intention for joining this discussion are to spend our lesson program that we successfully operated since two thousand and four and to protect the community from any accident prone instructors. Johnny Chandler has had an extensive history of accidents, harassment, dangerous behavior, and on and off the water. There have been several instances of Johnny breaking and entering into dock twelve, tampering with my vehicle and equipment. This resulted in officially police report that is now potential for restraining order. I believe that he is a liability to not only local water sport and maritime community, but also the Marina. I believe there's an ample amount of evidence for the harbor board to question Johnny Chandler's character and mental stability and their decision to approve or deny him. Johnny Chandler also advertises that he is a responsible water sport instructor, but there is plenty of evidence to prove otherwise and no history to prove that he has ability. I would like to propose additional ways that Wind Over Water could help generate revenue by providing a retail opportunity within your Marina. Wind Over Water has a history of several successful retail locations, including a water sports store in downtown Burlingame that generated decent monthly sales. If the board would consider helping the existing water sport concession and expansion, then there'd be opportunity for more income within the concession department of this harbor. Most importantly, Johnny Chandler poses a safety hazard to the members of the Marina as well as any potential water sport client of his own. Thank you for your time and hard work to support the Marina.
Thank you. So I have a quick question for the general manager. So Jim, what, I mean, can you just summarize what our provisions are if there are potential problems with a tenant or lessy? What are remedies are for that?
Anytime where the district feels that it's the applicant poses a threat to the safety of the Marina, we have the authority in the cap itself to immediately withhold or withdraw it or cancel it. So there's several different provisions within the cap that will address that do address safety and complying with the law. And if they don't, then we can always terminate the cap immediately. So this cap, if approved, would only be for, it would expire in December thirty first, twenty twenty one. And of course, we review the history of every applicant on safety and everything else, financial liability, insurance before we renew that cap every year.
So there is this like a safety net there for the
I have to go back and review it specifically, but there are provisions within the cap to address it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments by commissioners? Okay, so is there a, well, this is to consider this commercial activity permit. So is there a motion to approve this?
Virginia, I would like to make a motion that the board approve the commercial activities permit submitted by California Action Sports for Oyster Point Marina.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Last call for commissioner comments or questions because I'm closed. I've closed public comment. Okay, roll call, please, Melanie.
Commissioner Corrali.
I.
I.
Commissioner Zimpy.
I.
Commissioner Lorenz.
I.
That motion carries. Thank you very much. And thank you, John and Jim, for the information, additional information in your report, John. So moving on to item thirteen, records management and retention policy. Adopt resolution twenty one dash eleven approving revised policy two point one point four and resolution twenty one dash twelve approving destruction of unneeded district records. Julie.
Yes, thank you again. The San Mateo County Harbor District adopted resolution nineteen dash twenty ninety six on July seventeenth, nineteen ninety six, approving the district's record management and retention policy. On October eighteenth, twenty seventeen, the board adopted resolution seventeen dash twenty, approving an updated and restated version, which is provided on the staff report as attachment four. Staff reviewed the California Special District Association sample policy guidelines provided by the Secretary of State pursuant to government code section twelve, two thirty six, government code section sixty two oh one, other legal requirements that work very closely with district council to develop the attached recommended revised policy two dash two dot one dot four. And I'm gonna go ahead and and share that policy. See, here we go. This is the appendix A of the policy and the the purpose of the policy is to provide guidelines to staff regarding the retention or disposal of district records, provide for the identification, maintenance, safeguarding and disposal of records in the normal course of business and to ensure compliance with legal and regulatory requirements. Appendix A is the detailed listing of district records that the district would like to protect. They can be in electronic form. And so we're working with Think Connected and trying to come up with, you know, making sure that our electronic records are secure, backed up multiple times and and that only a few people have access to them so that they can't be deleted accidentally. So we've started populating a folder that would contain all of the permanent records on this list. We have a lot of records at our records retention storage unit. We still have a lot of records at our office that we'll continue to go through and review and make sure that we have all permanent records and one location or at least in a location that we can easily access those records when needed. So this appendix A, for example, will tell us the category, which is basically the department and the section of the department of appropriate. The type of record it is, a description or example of what the record is, the record retention period and the legal authority of how long you have to keep that record. You'll notice on here, if you go down to the board agenda packets, we have them listed as being permanent for historical reference is something that we continue to go back to and find detailed information about things that we need to understand or see what has happened in the past. You'll see next to that, the legal authority as government code six zero two oh one. But the keeping of board agenda packets isn't required to be permanent. So with legal counsel's advice, we put in district preference next to that legal authority that the district's preferences to keep those board agenda packets as permanent. The next item is something that I really wanted to point out to you, and that's the recording of the board meetings. We currently keep the tapes and the recordings of these meetings. I don't know how far they go back, but legally, we're only required to keep them thirty days. And then we can destroy them after that thirty days. We're recommending that we keep them for two years after the meeting. And I want to make sure that the harbor commission is on board that any videotapes of the board meetings can be destroyed after two years. And if you have a different recommendation, I would certainly, you know, be open to adjusting that. The rest of this information, you know, is very detailed, a lot of information. And I will go through all of it with you and the public, but if you have any questions, if you looked at it and do you have anything that sticks out, then I definitely am open to answering any questions.
We'll open up the floor to commissioner comments. If you have any questions or comments for Julie, please let me know. I don't see any hands raised. I don't see any unmutes. So I'll open this up to public comment because I see a hand up here for John Ollum.
Thank you, President Corrali. Perhaps it's not the best place to bring this up. But as a few of you might know, in the one or two members of the public that are left watching this may know the harbor district was subject to a major hack that was discovered on June twenty fifth. And nobody really has given, seems to have any data to indicate, you know, how long they were in the system, when they got there, what was on this, because they hacked into two systems. What were on those systems? Were there any personal information that might be worrisome if bad guys were exploiting it? There are, should be log files on your firewall that should have been obtained when you first noticed the the infection that would show if things were major downloads had occurred. So do you have anything to add to this as to like, was any files downloaded? What is your vendor basing their opinions on? Because apparently that's all you've gotten so far is opinions. For some reason, the district did not see fit to notice anybody that this had happened. The only reason we know it is because President Corrali likes to see her name in the newspapers. And so she called her friends up over at the Palo Alto Bailey and they published and she was willing to answer questions of Dave Price, anything he wanted to talk about, she was willing to delve into. But none of the commissioners have been afforded that opportunity, nor has the general public. So when I get, when you get to item F, please recognize my hand when it is raised. Thank you.
Any commissioner comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Lorenz, please.
And I actually have a question first.
Is there a space or cost associated with keeping the recorded digital meetings?
I wouldn't think that there would be a big cost associated with that, because, you know, the data is a lot cheaper than it used to be. Data storage is a lot cheaper than it used to be, so it would be minimal.
Okay, thank you. So in my view, I'm not a fan of getting rid of the recorded meetings. Our minutes are lacking a lot of detail in what went on in meetings. Oftentimes, it just says so-and-so spoke. Not much information is there, and so having the recordings, if we ever need to go back, would be very helpful. And there may be reasons in the future where people would like to know what happened at a particular date. The only way to really find out would be to go back to these recordings. So I don't see a compelling reason to get rid of them. I think they'll be useful in the future.
Go ahead, Julie, sorry.
Just for clarification, would you recommend that they be permanent records?
Yes, unless there was a compelling reason to destroy them. And I don't see, since it's not a large cost, or, you know, we're not talking about having boxes of recorded records somewhere. I think it's the value, the potential value is worth it.
Thank you for the clarification, Commissioner.
I also see that Michelle Dragony has put in the chat box that the current, currently video is stored on YouTube for free forever. I don't know if you saw that, Commissioner Lorenz.
Yep, thank you, we did.
Any other commissioner comments? Let me just make a quick comment about what happened with the situation with the Daily Post, just to set the record straight so that there aren't any misconstructions of the situation. So I did receive a call from the Daily Post, because they were actually doing an article on the VTA shooting, and I guess some ransomware issues that I was not aware about or aware of. And essentially, they saw on our agenda item, I think it was in May or April, I can't remember, we had an agenda item on the ransomware updates that we ended up discussing in closed session for security reasons. And I had just received the email from General Manager Pruitt about how we staved off the ransomware attack, and that is a public record. And so that was the message that I forwarded to the Daily Post at their request. And it was just fortuitous that we just received, the whole board received that. And I believe Lizzie, or somebody, no, not Lizzie, someone was quoted in the paper, and it wasn't me. I was just forwarding information based off of our public agenda item. So there was no, like, proactive seeking of being in the newspaper as erroneously claimed. But that is, I just wanted everyone to know that people are watching, and I thought that the article was actually a tribute, or, you know, a, well, not a tribute, a compliment to our staff for doing what we've done and the consultant that we've been working with. So I want to thank the staff, and especially Lizzie and Julie, for, you know, making sure that we're secure. I mean, I think it's in the public's interest, and I think it's in the Harbor District's best interest. So thank you to the staff for making sure that, you know, we're doing the best that we can do in this kind of technical, technologically challenging environment. So any other commissioner comments or questions? I see, Michelle, I thought that I saw your hand up, and I'm not sure if you would like to make a comment. If not, I'm just going to close public comment. And I think that there is, is there a motion to approve this revision of the policy?
So moved.
There's two, there's two, President Chan-Crawley, there's two resolutions to be adopted. Is the motion for both resolutions or just the one?
No, for both, sorry. I'm trying to pull it up. I'm trying to pull up the actual resolution on my computer, and it's just taking a little more time. So basically, it's to adopt the retention policy 2111 and approve, is that right, adopt, yeah, and approve the revised policy 2.1, 2.1.4. And 21-12 is approving destruction of unneeded district records. So Commissioner Waring, is that what you would like to make a motion for?
Yes, I'm going to read this to make sure. Yes. Both. That's correct.
Okay. So basically, you're making a motion to adopt Resolution 21-11, approving revised policy 2.1.4, and Resolution 21-12, approving the destruction of unneeded district records.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, any further commissioner discussions? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Waring.
Aye.
Commissioner Zimki.
Aye.
Commissioner Lorenz.
I'm going to say no for reasons stated, and I guess I'll have to thank you two for storing the records.
Commissioner Chan-Crawley.
Aye. So that motion carries. Thank you very much, and thanks, Julie, for your report. So now we're on to item E, which is commissioner comments. Any commissioner may make public comments limited to two minutes. I see Commissioner Zimki's mic off. Would you like to make any comments, commissioners?
Yes, yes, I can make a comment. I just wanted to reiterate my thanks to our consultant and to the staff that helped facilitate the public meeting that we had last week on our master plan. I appreciated all of the public comments that we received, and we'll be giving those due consideration. Also too, I just wanted to express my appreciation to the district for sending me to the CSDA conference two weeks ago. I was there with Jim and Julie and Virginia. I'm sorry that you didn't get to stick around other than the first day, but I found the conference very, very useful. The keynote speakers were entertaining and also very insightful in what they had to say. The breakout sessions were very good and very informative. I was able to look at a, take a wide variety of breakout sessions, all the way from technology and social media, working effectively on general plans and also limiting liability on roads and streets and trails. So it was very well-rounded, and I found it very useful and very interesting.
Commissioner Lorenz, I see that your mic is off, too.
It is. Just a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to suggest that we move the meeting time for our regular meeting to the evening hours, where more people can attend. If you look at the participant list, we have almost double the number of panelists than we do attendees. It's a statement of how difficult it is for the public to show up. So I would appreciate us taking that up at some point. And secondly, I'd like to suggest that we, I think I'll just leave it there for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Waring. You're on mute, Commissioner Waring. I'm not sure if you have anything to say, but if you do, you're on mute.
Oh, um, no, no, I don't.
Okay. I just have a quick comment. So I want to thank Jim and Commissioner Zimki for attending, and Julie. I didn't see you, Julie, at the CSDA conference, and I'm sorry I had to leave. It was a very last-minute request by the Red Cross for me to be deployed to help with sheltering evacuees from the Caldor Fire, which that deployment actually lasted for about eight or nine days. So I'm sorry that I missed the rest of the conference, but it was not an easy decision, but I felt that, that at that point in time, the evacuation issue and problems were very challenging around the state. So we were deployed up there. But I'm glad to know that Commissioner Zimki got a lot out of the conference, and Julie got a lot out of it as well. I will say that the one session that I attended with the General Manager and Commissioner Zimki was very good, and I hope that we've all learned from it. And it was basically how to work, have the board and general managers, you know, kind of work together well, and, you know, what things work and what things don't work, and, you know, just suggestions and things like that. So I thought that was very useful. So Jim, thanks for suggesting that. And that's all I have right now, which leads us to, any other comments? And I didn't, I see that you're unmuted, so I don't want to skip over you. If you have anything to add. Commissioner Lorenz.
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay. So now we'll go on to item F for future agenda items. New commissioners for that, I know there's a public comment on that. So why don't I open up to public comment now? John Olm.
Thank you, President Corrali. So back to the hack of data that occurred at the Harbor District. I would suggest that you agendize an item and discuss it. As Virginia made clear in her email to Mr. Price, that she was more than willing to answer any questions that he had. He didn't have very many, and he doesn't have an educated opinion on technical issues, apparently. Neither does her friend Emily Myb. So none of you know whether district data, personal data was stolen. None of you know if the bad guys are out there exploiting that right now. Yet none of you, and it has not been mentioned in any meeting, when I first found out about it, I sent in a PRA request and was provided a completely redacted memo that told me nothing. And then when I notified staff that Virginia had been in contact with the newspapers, all of a sudden, that redacted memo became unredacted. There's no explanation for that, other than they did not want me to know that two, not one, but two servers had been hacked, that your network had been infiltrated. You simply do not know when you were infiltrated. The bad guys make their money in two ways. They encrypt your data, and they download it and threaten to release it. As I understand it, this was the, what the servers that were in question handled your marina operations, everything. The credit cards, driver's license numbers, birth dates, all kinds of identifying information is stored in that package. Yet none of you has asked, and none of you know what happened. I don't quite understand why this is not on your agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Olm. Thank you. Any commissioner comments?
I'm going, I'll make the motion to adjourn, if there are no other comments.
Is there a second?
Can second that.
Okay. Roll call, please, Melanie.
Commissioner Zimki.
Aye.
Commissioner Lorenz.
Yes.
Commissioner Chan-Crawley.
Aye.
Commissioner Waring.
Aye.
Thank you for being here. The meeting's adjourned at 3:05. Thank you.
Great, have a date.